... to ascertain the presence of a quorum.
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Baker.
Yeah.
Counselor Campbell.
Here.
Counselor Siomo.
Present.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Asabi George.
Present.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Garrison.
Yes.
Counselor Janey.
Counselor McCarthy.
Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
Counselor Wu.
Present.
And Counselor Zakeham.
Here.
Madam President, we have a quorum.
Thank you. I'm gonna have to take a quick recess. I apologize. All guests, staff, and counselors to please rise. Today, we have Reverend Mary Margaret Earl, who will deliver the invocation. I ask everyone to remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. "That which we hold most sacred by whatever name we use, we gather in gratitude for this day and this opportunity to do work that builds up this city and its people. Help us to be open to the presence of the Holy, the creative Spirit, which is always around us and at work. Help us be connected also to our centers, our core, the place from which flows our courage, our remembrance that we are part of something larger than ourselves. I lift up a prayer for all the workers in this building today, for all those in City Hall who make this coming together possible: the cleaners sweeping the hallways and the clerks answering the phones, the interns who are learning valuable life lessons, the staff whose job it is to put into practice the vision of our leaders and the people. Help each one of them know their value. Inspire each of us to show one another kindness, appreciation, and respect for the work we do today. I lift up the counselors and leaders gathered here and give thanks for their presence, for their service, for the gifts they bring in service of the people. May they be strengthened and comforted in the personal struggles and worries that they bring in through these doors. May they, in their breathing in and breathing out, remember that whatever our troubles, sickness, financial worries, relationship struggles, that none of us is alone in these. And I've lift up a prayer that in this time of discussion and decision-making today, that our leaders stay connected to the vision and purpose that led them here. In the midst of the pressure, demands, busyness, help them continue to be guided by their highest principles. Help them be guided by courage, thoughtfulness, wisdom, and care. And when things are especially hard, help them to pause and breathe. Amen."
At this time, we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, so I just, good afternoon. Just wanted to say thank you and extend my deep gratitude, not just for opening the prayer, but for all that you do at the Unitarian Universalist ministry, urban ministry, for our community. You've been just a wonderful neighbor in terms of really opening up your doors and being that meeting space for so many in our community. And I'm so grateful that you were able to be here today and share your wonderful words of encouragement with us. So, thank you so much.
I ask my colleagues to bear with me. We have a few presentations, and part of it was, we normally only do two, timing with retirements and folks being here on this particular day. So, we'll move as quickly as possible. At this time, and I would like the young people to stand behind me, stand in front of me, stand whatever. Please come on up, come on up. And Mr. Rashid, if you could join me up here. Don't be shy. Take over this space. Take over the space. Yes, join me up here. And as they're making their way up, and Mr. Rashid, who is going to join me, this is the Boston Youth Leadership Association. And I have to give a special thank you to CJ in my office, who did a lot of the organizing to make this happen. And anytime we have young people in this space, of course, it's important that we recognize them and we acknowledge their presence. But I wanted to invite them up because this organization and this group is particularly unique. Their goals and objectives are to prepare our young people, and particularly our young people of color, frankly, for public service through leadership, active leadership awareness, and personal involvement. The program enables these students to realize their potential as citizens in this democracy, also as potential leaders. And maybe one of them, or many of them, will stand up here someday. That would be the hope. And it provides them a motivation and encouragement to inspire them into leadership roles, regardless of what they choose that to be for themselves. So, I wanted to acknowledge them. I wanted to also acknowledge, look at the adults that are with them. This work doesn't happen by accident. And wanted to quickly give Mr. Rashid an opportunity to say a couple of words before we took a quick picture.
Well, it's an honor. It's truly an honor to be here to do this because this is one of my greatest ambitions throughout my life, was to be able to see young people, see themselves as leaders, and to be exposed to the kinds of leadership that run and govern cities. So, this opportunity, you have no idea how exciting. This is my birthday is today.
That's a birthday!
This is the greatest gift I've ever received in my life, to be very frank and honest with you. So, I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to make this happen and thank these students because they're brilliant, trust me. We listen to them talk, you would be shocked. I hope someday, some of you might even consider taking them in as interns. I'm just saying. But, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Do you want us to move in? No, I was like moving in.
Can you guys just see all of them?
So, it's gonna be weird, like...
Thank you! Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. At this time, Madam Clerk, actually, if we could amend the attendance record to reflect that Counselor Janey is actually here. And at this time, Counselor Asabi George has two special presentations, and she will let you know which one she will start with. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Madam President. Today, I've got two presentations. It's the end of the school year, which means we're gonna, we like to bring our kids through, our youth through, to celebrate some of their greatest accomplishments over this current school year that's ending today. Today is the last day of school for our Boston students. I am first gonna recognize our MGH Scholars. If they join me here, down here, that'd be great, and I'll start talking. I'm incredibly excited to be joined by the student graduates from the MGH Scholars Program and to present citations in honor of their recognition and recognizing their achievements over the last four years. MGH Scholars is a four-year workforce development program for students from Boston that are interested in STEM subjects, science, technology, engineering, and math. No doubt, these kids are good at lots of things, but that's the focus of this program. Since the ninth grade, these students attended weekly STEM classes at Mass General to expose themselves to career opportunities in the health and medical fields. In addition to their regular schoolwork, some students have participated even longer through MGH's elementary and middle school STEM clubs. Over the course of the program, they have completed an intensive research program, shadowed doctors in neurology and oncology departments, and completed rigorous internship programs. Behind me are a few of the 12th grade graduates from this year, each of whom who have graduated from the Youth Scholars Program and will be attending college next year. The students that are with us today, two are, will be studying biology in the fall and on the medical track. One is studying pharmacy and looking to become a pharmacist. And the last will be either a mechanical engineer or will also study and explore astronomy. I'd like to formally congratulate these students for their academic achievement and being a shining example of what Boston, one of Boston's best assets, its students, its youth. As a, when I was teaching at East Boston High, we had this great program in partnership with MGH through this Scholars Program. And it really helped our students explore health careers, to explore a future in medicine, a future in providing direct services to people who might not be well. And also, to understand how the medical field here in Boston could be a part of their future. So, on behalf of the Boston City Council, Chrystian, to your students, congratulations on your success. And we look forward to never seeing you when any one of us visit the hospital here in Boston. But know that if we did find you, we were in good hands. Thank you. Well, we have graduates from here representing the program, from Urban Science Academy, from Boston Latin Academy, East Boston High School, and the Edward M. Kennedy School of Health and Sciences.
Colleagues, a quick picture.
It's not our birthday.
Yes.
All right, we gotta smile, huh?
So, as that, students are leaving, they're attending UMass Lowell, Mass College of Pharmacy, UMass Amherst, and the fourth is... And maybe two at UMass Lowell. Thank you, Counselor Campbell, for that. I'd also like to welcome the Scholar-Athletes Program. We have a few representatives from Scholar-Athletes with us today. Today, I'm honored to be joined by members of the Scholar-Athletes Program in recognition and in celebration of their 10th year anniversary. We're joined today by Mac Charles, Tarjane? Tarjane, sorry, honey. Tarjane, and DeShawn. DeShawn is actually a very recent graduate of Fenway High School. Scholar-Athletes is an amazing program. I am lucky enough to sit on the Board of Scholar-Athletes with a mission to support student academic achievement through athletics. And they're committed to closing the opportunity and achievement gaps for their ZONE members. Their organization goes far beyond athletics by providing a rigorous academic coaching and mentoring program, as well as college and career readiness. The goal for each of the ZONE members, students who are in the program, is to graduate from high school with a plan, to be focused on the future, and have the support and skills and tools they need to put that plan into action. I'm grateful for the work that Scholar-Athletes does every single day in so many of our schools, not just supporting our kids through supporting athletic programming in the Boston Public Schools, but through that mentoring and tutoring effort that happens across our city every single day. When we think about athletes, we sometimes have a stereotypical athlete or a jock, male or female, in mind. But this, the Scholar-Athletes Program and the work that happens in the ZONE is really about embracing the whole student, to use athletics as the carrot, to use supporting athletic programming as the carrot. But it's really about closing the achievement gap. It's about creating greater access to programming and support. And it's lending a hand and giving kids an opportunity to explore, to grow, and to really improve the student piece and the athlete piece at the same time. So, on behalf of the Boston City Council in recognition of Scholar-Athletes' 10th year, I am presenting this resolution on behalf of this body to all of you and look forward to 10 more years of success in the Boston Public Schools. Thank you. Join everybody for a photo, that'd be great. Start smiling, Michael, let's go. Mike's on.
Thank you very much.
We'll see you tonight?
Will you be there tonight?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, YouTube.
Thank you very much, Counselor Asabi George, for the special presentations. At this time, we will move on to the regular order of business. Moving on to the approval of the minutes. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last council meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objection, the minutes are so approved. Moving on to communications from His Honor, the Mayor.
Madam President, would you like me to read docket number 0964 through 0967?
That would be great, thank you.
Docket number 0964, message and order for annual appropriation and tax order for FY 2020 filed in the office of the city clerk on June 17, 2019. Docket number 0965, message and order for annual appropriation for the school department for the FY 2020, filed in the office of the city clerk on June 17, 2019. Docket number 0966, message and order approving an appropriation of $40 million to the other post-employment benefits known as OPEB, Liability Trust Fund, established under Section 20 of the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 32B, filed in the office of the city clerk on June 17, 2019. And docket number 0967, message and order approving the appropriation of $36,400,000 from the city's capital grant fund in order to provide funding for various transportation and public realm improvements. These projects are aligned with the goals for GoBoston2030, the city's transportation master plan. The funds shall be credited to the capital grant fund from the parking meter fund filed in the office of the city clerk on June 17, 2019.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Dockets 0964 through 0967 will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Would you like me to read docket number 0968 and 0969?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Docket number 0968, message and order approving a supplemental appropriation of $12,37,969 to cover the FY '19 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the Boston School Committee and the Boston Teachers Union, known as BTU, Local 66, AFT, Mass AFL-CIO. The term of the contract is September 1, 2018, through August 31, 2021. The major provisions of the contract include base wage increases of 2% in September of each fiscal year, filed in the office of the city clerk on June 17, 2019. And docket number 0969, message and order to reduce the FY '19 appropriation for the Reserve for Collective Bargaining to provide funding for the Boston Public Schools for the FY '19 costs contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the Boston School Committee and the Boston Teachers Union, BTU, Local 66, AFT, Mass AFL-CIO.
Dockets 0968 through 0969 will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0970, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $260,000 in the form of a grant awarded by the Boston Redevelopment Authority, DBA, the Boston Planning and Development Agency, pursuant to the Winthrop Square Cooperation Agreement, One Post Office Square Cooperation Agreement, and the 15 to 19 Congress Street Cooperation Agreement. The purpose of this grant is to facilitate planning and design for the Seaport to North Station Rapid Bus Corridor. The Seaport to North Station Rapid Bus Corridor was identified in the GoBoston2030 as a key future rapid bus corridor.
Docket 0970 will be assigned to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation.
Docket number 0971, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $20,000 in the form of a grant for the Cultural Districts Initiative Program, awarded by the Massachusetts Cultural Council, to be administered by the Department of Arts and Culture. The grant will fund programs and events in the Fenway Cultural District, Boston Latin Quarter, the Boston Literacy Cultural District, and the Roxbury Cultural District.
Counselor Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I rise to ask my colleagues to suspend the rules and pass docket 0971 so that we can use this $20,000 grant to support our cultural districts, including two in my district, District 7, the Fenway Cultural District and the Roxbury Cultural District, but certainly supports all of our cultural districts throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Janey. At this time, Counselor Janey, who's Chair of the Committee on Arts, Culture, and Special Events, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0971. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0971 has been passed. Moving on to reports of public officers and others.
Docket number 0972, notices received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of June 5, 2019.
Docket 0972 will be placed on file.
Docket number 0973, notices received from the mayor of his absence from the city from 6:30 a.m. on Monday, June 17, 2019, until 6:30 p.m. on Monday, June 17, 2019.
Docket 0973 will be placed on file.
Docket number 0974, the constable bond of Russell Castagna, having been duly approved by the collective treasurer, was received and approved under the usual terms and conditions.
The chair seeks approval of docket 0974 under the usual terms and conditions. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0974 has been approved under the usual terms and conditions. Moving on to reports of committees.
Docket number 0110, the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, to which was referred on January 9, 2019. Docket number 0110, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $171,242 in the form of a grant for the Title III Ombudsman 2019, awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Elderly Commission. Submit a report recommending the order ought to pass in a new draft.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 0110 is an authorization to accept and expand funds awarded for the Title III Ombudsman Grant. The committee held a hearing on this grant back in April. Commissioner Emily Shea of the Age Strong Commission participated. The purpose of this grant is to fund services and advocacy for seniors in nursing homes. This grant is received by the commission every year, which then puts the program out to bid, and the winning vendor runs the program, which recruits in-trains volunteers that provide support for senior citizens living in nursing homes. The city's long-serving, longstanding vendor for this program has been Ethos, an incredible multi-service agency in my district, which is one of the few that's certified to run the program. Now, the reason why I'm asking that we pass this in a new draft because the original docket was for $171,000, and that does not reflect a buffer amount, which is typically included in these grant orders to, in case the funding would exceed the projected amount. So, we have today revised the order to include that buffer, which brings the amount to $214,000 even. As Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, I recommend that docket 0110 ought to pass in a new draft.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. At this time, Counselor O'Malley, who's Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0110 in a new draft. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0110 has been passed in a new draft.
Docket number 0220, the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, to which was referred on January 30, 2019. Docket number 0220, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $124,263.36 in the form of a grant for the FY '19 State Elder Lunch Program, awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Elderly Commission. Submit a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Once again, docket 0220, we also discussed at this hearing on April 5. The grant here will fund meals for seniors in Boston, both through home delivery, as well as 47 congregate meal sites, which I would encourage you all to visit these sites if you haven't already. They're really wonderful gathering spots, meeting places. They've really gone to focus on cultural competency, have different foods, it's a great, great event. At these congregate meal sites, residents over the age of 60 can come in and get a meal for free with a suggested donation of $2. Vendor's ethos in the Chinese Golden Age Center run this program, which strives to serve culturally reflective meals and provide a welcoming environment for all seniors. This order is a supplement to docket 1664, which the committee passed in December of last year and was a projection of the award at the time. The actual award received was $124,263.36 greater. So, docket 0220, which we are about to vote on, will make the award whole to fully fund this incredibly valued and valuable program. Once again, as Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, I recommend docket 0220 ought to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, who's Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, recommends acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0220. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0220 has been passed. The ayes have it, docket 0220 has been passed.
Docket number 0804, Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on June 13, 2019, docket number 0804, message and order authorizing the Collective Treasurer for the City of Boston to enter into a compensation balance agreement with Citizens Bank pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 44, Section 53F, for the provisions of banking services as more fully described in the attached form, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel Siomo, you have the floor.
Thank you. The committee held its hearing last Thursday on June 13 to discuss entering into a compensation balance agreement with Citizens Bank to manage the City of Boston's banking services. As mandated by statute, every three years, the city is required to re-procur its banking services contract. City Council and mayoral approval is required before the new contract can be executed. The committee heard testimony from Jew Smith, head of the Treasury for the City of Boston, and Rich D. Piano, second Assistant Collective Treasurer for the city. The panel discussed the procurement and evaluation process, which assessed potential bidders on a number of factors, including scope of services, management capability, quality control, disaster business recovery references, and cost. The three firms that scored in the highest range were Bank of America, Santander, and Citizens Bank, our current banking service provider. After evaluating cost proposals and their overall technical score, it was determined that Citizens Bank would be awarded the contract. It was noted that Citizens Bank's fee schedule, while already low, will be even lower than the current cost structure. The total expected annual cost of the contract, though difficult to determine, the Treasury Department estimates that it could be approximately $2 million annually. The banking services that will be provided will include payroll management, automated clearinghouse credit and reporting, demand deposit accounts, wire services, and bank reconciliation reports for all accounts. As the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, I recommend moving the listed docket from the committee to the full council for discussion and formal action. At this time, I recommend that this order ought to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Siomo. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter? At this time, Counsel Siomo, who is Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0804. All those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0804 has been passed. Moving on to matters recently heard for possible action.
Madam President, would you like me to read 0671 through 0673?
That'd be great, thank you.
Docket number 0671, notice is received from the mayor of the appointment of Sammy Nebulci as a member of the Municipal Lobbying Compliance Commission for a term expiring January 3, 2022. Docket number 0672, notice is received from the mayor of the appointment of Stephanie Everett as a member of the Municipal Lobbying Compliance Commission for a term expiring January 3, 2022. And docket number 0673, notice is received from the mayor of the appointment of Vivian Lee as a member of the Municipal Lobbying Compliance Commission for a term expiring January 3, 2022.
Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The purpose of the commission is to enforce compliance with the lobbyist regulations that this body passed last year, and we held a hearing yesterday. The ordinance requires new regulatory practices aimed at lobbying transparency and accountability and deferring to 2-15.4 of the ordinance. The Municipal Lobbying Compliance Commission comprised of five commissioners, which include two at-large members and one, who is an attorney with experience in public ethics law, all three of whom should be selected by the mayor, along with an appointee as the City Clerk and/or designee, and the City Council President and/or designee. Clerk Feeney had provided testimony outlining the general functions and responsibilities of the clerk's office, and as a result of the city's new lobbying ordinance, lobbying registration and reporting. It should be noted that prior to the passage, the city's lobbying ordinance, the clerk's office still maintained registration of lobbyists who were interacting with the City of Boston. We additionally heard testimony from the three appointees about their prospective qualifications and their professional backgrounds, and how they will further the commission's objectives. Sammy Nebulci is an attorney with experience in public ethics law. Stephanie Everett is an attorney with experience in government and policy, and Vivian Lee has experience in government public disclosure regulations and also serving on other municipal boards. The members of the commission stated that their role is to create a process that works and to provide clarity to the ordinance. The commission will interpret and provide clarification through rulemaking authority, which ensures effectiveness of the ordinance through education, and will enforce provisions of this ordinance. The committee also engaged a discussion pertaining to some of the aspects of the ordinance and any potential conflicts of interest that may appear, whether among the commission members and/or a matter that may appear in front of them. At this time, as Chair of Government Operations, I recommend that docket 0671, 0672, and 0673 be placed on file so that the Municipal Lobbying Commission can move forward with their responsibilities. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter? At this, Counsel Wu. Counsel Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you. So, just because we're not going to take a vote on this, just wanted to clarify some comments that I had made at the hearing, just expressing concern about the precedent that it might possibly set when members of the Municipal Lobbying Compliance Board are also members of other boards and commissions in the city, because their oversight function will be to make decisions about whether other boards and members of other boards and commissions are being influenced, and where the lines are, and this and that. Again, you know, we had two of the three people before us are either on another board or slated to join another board, having been confirmed by the council, and I just think there needs to be a lot of clarity. If there were one board in the city, that probably should be a requirement that you could not serve on another board or commission. I think it would be the Lobbying Compliance Commission. So, just wanted to flag my concerns about that. We talked about ways to mitigate that, or maybe create policies for the other boards that those people are serving on to ensure a strict dichotomy, but because this is the first round of appointments, I think we need to be very clear that this is something the council should consider, maybe it's changes to the ordinance or something later on, but it's something that we need to be aware of. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wu. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter? At this time, docettes 071 through 0671 through 0673 will be placed on file. Moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 0975, Counsel Zachem offered the following ordinance amending the City of Boston Trust Act.
Counsel Zachem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I am rising today to introduce amendments to our 2014 Boston Trust Act, which at the time that this council unanimously passed, was the most progressive version of that legislation across the country prohibiting the Boston Police Department from detaining people based on their immigration status. Since that time, just a couple of years ago, the Supreme Judicial Court made an important ruling that prohibited all law enforcement across Massachusetts from holding individuals based on their immigration status. It was a landmark decision, it was an important decision, but we are in a changed time right now. Just yesterday, our president once again has lashed out via Twitter, threatening people based on their immigration status, threatening immigrants, threatening people with arrests, with deportations, things that are, quite frankly, unacceptable in any time, they're un-American, and it's incumbent upon all of us to continue to stand up for these values. So this bill was in the works long before these recent actions by the president, but it just illustrates how important it is for cities like Boston, for states like Massachusetts to stand up for our values, to say, we can't control the Twitter of the president, we can't control the insane orders he's giving to ICE or to others. What we can do is we're going to say that the Boston Police Department, or other city agencies, personnel, and resources are not going to be used to further the persecution of people based on their immigration status, that we have thousands of people here who are participating in our economy, who live in our communities, who have U.S. citizen family members and children that should not be living in fear, and the very least we can do is make sure that in the City of Boston, our resources and our personnel are not going to participate in those persecutions. So these amendments are meant to clarify the role of City of Boston agencies, including the Police Department, in immigration enforcement issues. There is clear, we work to make sure this is a practical, enforceable policy that provides clarity to the police and to our community members, and some of it is in response to a widely reported incident that happened a couple of years ago, where the Boston Police and Immigration and Customs Enforcement had been sharing some information. So in this bill, and I hope to have a swift hearing and work on passing this, and I want to thank Mayor Walsh and his team for their support in announcing this together and working together to make sure this is a strong policy. Essentially, what it says is it goes to say that the Boston Police Department or other city agencies are not going to actively work with Immigration and Customs Enforcement to detain people, to investigate them, to share information around immigration issues. Being here without status, being undocumented, is not a crime, even under federal law. It's a civil violation. Our Police Department, as we know every day, has important public safety functions here in the City of Boston, they do a great job of that. They do not need to be put into a position that undermines trust in the communities that we are serving every day to further work with Immigration and Customs Enforcement on this failed federal immigration policy, regardless of what side people are taking when it comes to the immigration debate in this country. One thing is certain, the system is broken, and unfortunately, it's falling on local governments, people like us, people in this building, to try and make sense of it, to try and work on a day-to-day basis in a practical way that continues with what we can do, what we can do to make things work better. So I want to thank the mayor, the Police Department, the advocates, the ACLU, and many of my colleagues and others, not just in 2014, passing the original bill, but working on a thoughtful way to pass these amendments. They are incredibly important, and we need to continue to be vigilant in standing up for civil rights. This is one of the things that, as I think about the turbulent times we are in, where people are going to ask us, our kids are asking us, our friends, you know, 15, 20 years from now, what were you doing when we had a president who was rounding up people because they're from another country, because they didn't have status? And this is something that we can and should do, and at the same time, it's going to make our city safer, because it's going to make sure that people know they can call the Boston Police, they're the victims of a crime, the witnesses of a crime. Often, domestic violence, sexual assault, the perpetrators use the undocumented status of the victim or a relative to cowl them into silence, and this should help put a stop to that. So I won't go on and on about this. I think it's incredibly important, I was incredibly proud when this body unanimously supported the 2014 bill. These updates are necessary in a changed environment. Look forward to working with my colleagues on a quick hearing, the mayor's administration, the Police Department, ACLU, immigration advocates, and others, to make sure Boston continues to have a strong policy, protects our public safety, and protects everyone in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Zachem. Counsel Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to commend the maker again on your leadership. I think it was one of the first things you passed when you came to this body, and it's only fitting that, as you are going to one day, or sooner, exit this body, that you are leading not just Boston, not just this body, but even the nation, in making sure that as a municipality, we take what initiatives we can to create, I think, a balanced approach to creating safety for our community, creating trust, but also dealing with the practical realities of law enforcement. The fact that we have had that hearing and learned so much about the practical realities of law enforcement, and how in many cases, they are feeling their way through the dark. And so I think it's our job to shine that light, and figuring out where the loopholes are, where the concerns are, that we can help fill in additional added guidance, and that's what I think this is going to do. We have stated quite firmly as a city that we stand by all people who live here, that our job is not to determine whether they have a right to be here as a U.S. citizen or not, that they will be protected, they will be educated, and they will be valued. And I think that this only furthers that commitment. And I just want to again end with commending the maker. Thank you so much, thank you for this body and those who are here to pass the first Trust Act, and I look to passing the amended version.
Thank you, Counsel Edwards, and I'm assuming you also would like to add your name?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counsel Edwards, anyone else? Counsel Siomo, Counsel Asabi George, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Flynn, Counsel Janey, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Wu, as well as the Chair. Let's, docket 0975 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 0976, Counsel Edwards offers the following resolution relative to eviction ceiling.
Counsel Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, I stand before my colleagues with the hope that you will support a resolution for an act that's very near and dear to my heart, that I've had the pleasure of actually working with my senator to help craft. It's the Homes Act, which is the housing opportunity and mobility through eviction ceiling. We know that our city and state are facing a housing crisis. This resolution is not necessarily going to deal with that end of the housing crisis, it's dealing with the individuals who unfortunately have made it out on the other end, who were evicted, who were brought to court. As a matter of fact, there are a million people in Massachusetts with an eviction record. Many of them are women, many of them are people of color, but all of them, or excuse me, 80% of them are in, were in eviction court because they didn't have the rent. That's really what has caused most evictions, and with our rising rents, especially, we're finding more and more people not being able to make them. So these records oftentimes are inaccurate, and they're used by third-party servicing companies to render automatic judgments to prevent landlords from even renting, or even considering that person as a tenant. Let's be clear, I'm a landlord, and I do support being able to do a background check on tenants and finding out if they have an eviction record, but it doesn't make any sense, nor is it really important to know or helpful to know that a person was evicted 20 years ago. These records from 20 years ago are permanently available and publicly searchable right now, and that's what we're trying to stop. It creates a scarlet letter E on a person and creates a stigma. What really means is that they just didn't have the money at one point in their life. We're talking about seniors, many of them women, on social security now who have an eviction record, and some of them are facing displacement, already having low income in social security. They now also have this scarlet letter from the 80s or from the 90s. The chances of them finding a new place is extremely low. And we just don't think that tenants should be denied access or deny, or have a stigma for fighting for their rights, because what we've also found is eviction records are created the minute that a landlord files a court, or files a case in court. At that moment, you are defendant, and that's what's available to the public. Now, you may have worked it out with the landlord, a lot of tenants think they've actually, by signing an agreement for judgment, that they will not have a record. That is not true. We're finding that many people who've worked it out, who've walked away, who left without being formally evicted, still have an eviction record, and they didn't know that. Your case could have been dismissed, you could have even won, and it's still a black mark against you. Landlords that I've spoken to didn't know that by filing these notices to quit and going to court, that they were actually creating permanent eviction records against their tenants. This is a just-in-case measure that a lot of them take, and they're advised to take, but they didn't realize that this was going to cause permanent damage to their tenants. The majority have no idea about this. I didn't know about this as a landlord. The Mass Law Reform Institute recently released a report, Evicted for Life, I provided a copy for everyone to see, that demonstrates many instances where people are given eviction records. It also demonstrates the impact on that, how they're rejected for housing, how they're misidentified, and how, to this day, landlords name children when they're evicting the entire family. So the mother, the father, the children are also named as defendants. So you have children graduating from college who would like to rent their first apartment, and they have an eviction record. They did not sign the lease, they didn't not pay the rent, but they're the ones who have the burden in the record. Actually, a report in terms of misidentification found that a woman's name by Maria Rivera, there's 340 cases with a woman's name like that, and you could look up any other common name, and you will find that they are, that they are filled with hundreds of those names. And a lazy third-party reporting agency oftentimes would then say, the Maria Rivera applying for my apartment should be discarded and dismissed. We think those tenant screening companies should be accurate, and if they're not accurate, that they should pay a fine. So we're asking for the state to take action on this. Legislation proposed by Representative Mike Moran and Senator Joe Boncorrie would protect tenants from being unfairly branded with an eviction record by sealing those records until a judgment is rendered and ensuring the accuracy of the records. So not, so no longer will a person who has simply filed, has a case filed against them automatically be given an eviction record. Instead, we want them to go through the process in a sealed record, and only if a judge fines that you didn't pay the rent, or you violated the lease, or that you need to be evicted, should that record be made public. If you manage to work it out, we don't see the point in punishing you for the rest of your life. And we also think that once those records are made public, there should be a finite amount of time that they're available to the public. We look to already what the State House did when it came to core reform. Misdemeanors, we're giving people a second chance after three years after a misdemeanor. We think that this should be on parity with that. So after three years... So, after three years, if you've been evicted, we believe that the case should be sealed, and you should be allowed to move on with your life. I want to be very clear, as a landlord, in helping to draft and work on this, I made very clear that landlords' rights to evict are not impacted by this law. The process, the timing, the notice, the costs, all of those things stay the exact same. We're talking about a person being able to move on with their life after they've been evicted. It's those individuals, those million individual cases, that we're trying to protect. Good thing about this is that there is a growing coalition behind this. We see that this is beyond just a landlord-tenant conversation. We have organizations such as SAIU 11, or excuse me, SAIU 888. We have YIMBs and people who support increasing density in our communities. We have the ACLU of Massachusetts. We have the Jewish Alliance for Law and Social Justice, Massachusetts Jobs with Justice, Mayor Kurti Tony of Somerville, Home Start, Mass Law Reform, Greater Boston Legal Services, and it's a growing coalition where we expect only more, more individuals from the labor community, from the racial justice, from the gender justice, from all different communities to come on board with us. So, I'm asking you, my colleagues, to support this bill that's pending at the State House. We expect a hearing in July. By passing this resolution today and continue the momentum that is only growing, to assure that people can move on with their lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Edwards. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Just through the chair, to the maker, I'm just trying to identify where the three-year provision is.
In the reservation, or is it not?
In the, in either, either or. I just want to make sure that there's, I would sign, if there's a guarantee that we have a three-year clause, I would sign my name onto it, but I just don't see it in the.
So, just a point of clarification, in the legislation itself, there's a three-year.
Got you. Perfect.
Yeah, I would love to guarantee that we're going to get those three years, but my, our colleagues in the State House are going to hopefully do their job, but that's exactly what we support.
Thank you, Madam President. Please add my name.
Thank you, and thank you, Counsel Edwards, for the clarification. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Baker, Counsel Siomo, Counsel Asabi George, Counsel Flynn, Counsel Garrison, Counsel Janey, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Wu, Counsel Zakeham, as well as the chair. At this time, Counsel Edwards seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0976. All those in favor of adoption, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0976 has been passed. Moving on to personnel orders.
Docket, docket number 0977, Counsel Campbell for Counsel Wu.
Counsel Wu seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0977. All those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0977 has been passed.
Docket number 0978, Counsel Campbell for Counsel Asabi George.
Counsel Asabi George seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0978. All those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0978 has been passed.
Docket number 0979, Counsel Campbell for Counsel Zakeham.
Counsel Zakeham seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0979. All those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0979 has been passed.
Docket number 0980 is withdrawn. Docket number 0981, Counsel Campbell offered the following order.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0981. All those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0981 has been passed. Moving on to late files. I am informed by the clerk that there are two late files. One is a letter from a colleague regarding his absence, and the other is regarding an upcoming meeting. Madam Clerk, if you could read the first late file.
Thank you, Madam President. From the Office of City Councilor Timothy P. McCarthy, Counselor District 5, June 19, 2019. Dear Clerk Feeney, President Campbell, and colleagues, please be advised, the Counsel McCarthy will be absent from the council meeting on June 19, 2019. He is attending a funeral and will review the tape on his return. Sincerely, Timothy McCarthy, District 5 Counselor.
The first late file matter will be placed on file.
Second late file matter, Counsel Michelle Wu, June 19, 2019. Dear Madam Clerk, I am, I am writing to inform you that I am hosting a meeting with advocates on reprecincting in the city of Boston. The meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, June 26, at 10:30 a.m. in the Atkins Room at City Hall. I have extended invitations to all my colleagues, so a quorum may be present. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Sincerely, Michelle Wu, Boston City Counselor at Large.
The second late file matter will be placed on file. Moving on to the green sheets, anybody wishing to remove a matter may do so now. Moving right along, I am informed by the clerk that there are two late file matters, which in the absence of objection, will be added to today's consent agenda. Hearing and seeing no objections, the two late file matters are so added. The chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda at this time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the consent agenda has been adopted. Any announcements? Counsel Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. As folks know, today is June 19, known as Juneteenth. So, one, I want to apologize for being late to the meeting today. I was downstairs for the flag raising on the plaza. But Juneteenth is an important celebration for folks who don't know. It is Freedom Day for the African-American community in this country, a day of celebration, of jubilation, but it's also a day of reflection, and it's a reminder for me and certainly all on this body, given the business that we have at hand, that liberation is an ongoing struggle, that we all have to be in this fight together to continue to do everything we can, whether it's for the immigrant community, whether it's for tenants who have been evicted, whether it's dealing with the wealth gap in Boston. We have a lot of work to do to ensure that we are all, are all truly free in this country. There are wonderful celebrations. If folks are interested, there was Roxbury Homecoming at Franklin Park last Saturday. It was an amazing event. There are Juneteenth celebrations today, both in my district. I'm sure there are other events happening as well, but at the Center for Afro-American Artists, there's a wonderful celebration, they do it every single year, at the Museum of Fine Arts, there's a celebration as well. I encourage folks to come out to support those events if you can, if you cannot, certainly to read up, happy to talk with folks after if people are confused about why we need to celebrate Juneteenth. The short answer is, after the Emancipation Proclamation in 1863, two and a half years for folks in Texas, those who were enslaved in Texas, to, to realize, or to be told that freedom in fact was here. But as I said at the beginning, freedom is an ongoing struggle, and we've got to make sure that everyone in our communities, that we represent everyone in our city and everyone in this nation are truly free. So, I just wanted to share that with folks.
Thank you, Counsel Janey. Counsel O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask unanimous consent to make a brief statement regarding, regarding government efficiencies.
I don't think anyone's going to object.
No objection?
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Two weeks ago today, my dear colleague from East Boston and I introduced a hearing order on period poverty and making sure that we had menstrual products. Later in that meeting, I had a hearing order on textile recycling. All of us have been working on composting, and I'm delighted to report that because of the good leadership of our mayor and his incredible team, all of those things are going into effect. So, people often criticize government for moving slowly, and it does, at a glacial pace oftentimes, but once in a while, you'll see good people working together to get things done, and it's a great day, and I'm proud of all of you and my, this incredible body for our great leadership and partnership with the mayor and his, his great leadership on these as well. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Thank you, Counsel Edwards. Counsel Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to request you, and I'm as consent to make a brief statement about the last day of school.
And I think we sort of thrown that out, but just go right ahead, Counsel Asabi George.
I just, I just want to wish all of our students in the Boston Public Schools, today is their last day, it's day 180. If they're still in school today, those that have muscled through to the very last day, I just want to wish them a very safe and happy summer. I wish my teacher friends, who I say, you know, people ask me all the time, do I miss, miss the classroom, and I certainly miss being with young people day in and day out, but more than that, I miss my colleagues, the teachers to the left, to the right, across the hall, and I know that they're all, most of them are probably out now as it's a half a day in Boston Public Schools, and they have kicked off their summer. Those that are taking the summer off, they deserve every single minute. I say, I want my kids' teachers to be so exhausted by the time they get to summer, that the only place they want to find themselves is on the beach, are just enjoying their time off. Some of them will commit to working over the summer, whether at summer school or other employment, as many of our teachers do have second jobs. But I just want to wish them all, thank them for a great school year, and wish them a wonderful summer off. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Asabi George. Any other announcements? At this time, I would like my colleagues, all guests and staff, to please rise as we adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counsel Siomo and the chair, Patricia Gru. For Counsel Siomo, Flaherty, Baker and the chair, Annette Richardson. For Counsel McCarthy, Dominic Pontia. For Counsel O'Malley, Janet Pagluclia and Francine McGetrick. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. At this time, the chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of those aforementioned individuals. We are slated to meet again in this chamber at Boston City Hall on Wednesday, June 26, at 12 noon. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the council is adjourned.